Oh, really? Present for short is sorry.
We need to do our code business. So it's still. A lot of people really. Sorry that my face was. See I come up that came to an idea before as open session. But I have to come up with it again. There's no meaning.
Martin, are we ready to go?
We are ready, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I will call the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Mill Creek City Council's special meeting to order at six o'clock will begin at the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilmember Duque, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call, please.
Mayor, roll call.
Here.
Mayor Portem Vignelle.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Okay, audience communication. Would anyone in chambers like to address the council this evening? Seen no one indicate. Please, if you'd come to the podium and state your name and city of residence and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is David Scudder. I am a resident of Mill Creek. And I'd like to address, speak just a little bit about the Penny Creek Natural Area. Like to point out, this is the fourth time I've either come to the council to speak about this or provided written comments, two thousand eleven, fifteen. Again, in two thousand nineteen. And those of you who are familiar with the history of the Penny Creek Natural Area will know what was going on at those times. I'd like to start by, by expressing thanks for many people who have made the Penny Creek Natural Area a reality. That includes the, the farm LLC. Who are, have created it as a mitigation for, for some of the issues in their construction. The Mill Creek Planning Commission played, clearly played a important role in that. The Kiwanis has provided some wonderful support and, and putting benches there. Like to thank Jeff Doan, who has created a Facebook group, the Friends of Penny Creek Natural Area, which should be able to provide as a viable communication tool to, and, and should help the city in, in getting volunteer contributions. As you probably know, the, the farm is committed to, or committed to maintaining it for five years. And that five years is, is close to being complete. And I would simply like to urge the council to accept the Penny Creek Natural Area as a city park, recreation, whatever, however you want to term it. It's a, it's a very, very valuable area, both as a education and a recreation area for, for citizens of the area. But also for just an absolute host of wildlife. Blue herons, countless ducks of various species and Canada geese and bald eagles, otters, beavers. And the list goes on and on. Of course, we're frequently, those near neighbors, we are frequently serenaded at night by the coyotes. So that's, that is basically all I wanted to provide is. I believe there's a lot of support available in the community to help make it a functional area. And I urge the city to take advantage of that.
Thank you for your promise. Is there anyone online that would like to address, to address the council? Mr. Doan?
Hi, yes, this is Jeff Doan. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I happen to live in the North Point Community, so I just wanted that for the record. But I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Penny Creek Natural Area, so appreciated the kind of leading comments there in the chamber. And speaking specifically on behalf of a group of residents who care deeply about the Penny Creek Natural Area and its future. This is just for specifics, the area that's east of thirty-fifth and south of one hundred and thirty-second for identification purposes. And then I want to acknowledge not only those who are in the room, who are part of this growing group of interested community members, but also those who've joined on the call tonight on behalf of, of this message as well. So over the past few months, you heard a little bit about our group. It's the Friends of the Penny Creek Natural Area. It now has over a hundred and twenty-five local community members. And these are all community members who are passionate about protecting and supporting this unique green space. Unlike more developed parks within the Mill Creek Community, Penny Creek Natural Area is an undisturbed natural environment. It truly is a hidden gem within our city. It provides the walking space, the environmental value, and a natural experience that, that you have already heard a little bit about and probably seen yourselves. That separates it apart from our other recreational spaces. It's also largely low maintenance, and that's due to the support of an active community stewardship group. So I really want to emphasize that for the council. However, there are a few key challenges that require the city's support and leadership and is what ultimately brought me here today. So the first is an ask for the city to publicly document and share the arrangements, as well as any conditions associated with the use of this land. The city staff have been incredibly responsive, and I want to thank them for responding to individual inquiries. But all of our understandings about the property status is based off of word of mouth. So greater consistency through some written guidance would really help to guide responsible stewardship and build long-term trust with this group that's forming. Second, we really need help with addressing the entrance off of Thirty-Fifth Avenue. The flooding and the stream access is very complicated, but it has made that entrance frequently impassable, either by car, by foot, or any other means. And during the rainy seasons, it's really bad, but now it's starting to be bad pretty much year-round. It's a safety and accessibility issue that really limits community use as well as emergency access. And then last, we would like to urge the city, as previously echoed in chambers there, to prioritize and clearly communicate the long-term plan for the future of the Penny Creek Natural Area. The residents want to support this space, and we're ready to partner with the city. But we need to know what the future holds and how we can help shape it as community members. So in summary, my ask for the city's actions are for a reference document regarding the area's use, engagement to resolve the entrance flooding issues, and lastly, a long-term plan. So I want to thank the city for your time this evening and the council and the continued work to protect Mill Creek's natural and recreational spaces. We hope that the Penny Creek Natural Area will be part of the future for our community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. And this is something that's on our radar. I believe Martin has a meeting upcoming with Mr. Patterson from the farm. And so this is one of the topics of discussion, and you've highlighted one of the issues, the entrance that needs to be addressed as part of this. So we'll be bringing this back to council in the weeks to come, I'm, I'm sure. So thank you. Is there anyone else online that'd like to address the council this evening? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the evening. We'll move now to our presentations. And Mr. Ryan, a permit update for two thousand twenty-four.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Portem and Council. Director Ryan here for community development planning. Always excited and happy to talk about everyone's favorite topic on earth, permitting data. So today we are going to be. All right, there we are. So today we're going to be going over just a quick brief overview. What are the types of permits at the planning department? And also, we missed to also acknowledge the public works department, our two departments, what kind of permits we review. Trying to specify kind of what city goes over, what our third-party safe bill contractor does, how we did in two thousand twenty-four, how's our performance, what are our stats? Everyone likes to know what our stats are. And then subs, and just provide some historical documentation and trend lines. So quick, what types of permits are handled by the city? So the city, city staff, so your fearless workers, work on building permits, clearing and grading permits, planning right-of-way signs and trees. These kinds of things can include new buildings, fences, tree removal, as suggested by the name, right-of-ways, like doing street utility work, driver replacements, subdivisions, all sorts of fun, fun stuff. What do we not do? We off-sort, we outsource our building permits. So this could be also kind of new buildings, but usually like the really technical stuff, like, you know, where we put specific HVAC systems and plumbing and those kinds of really technical review functions, tenant improvements. We usually don't get involved if someone's putting in or remodeling their storefront or something that's done through Safe Bill. Also, we have, in, we house a member from South County Fire. They do the fire permits, all those activities. And then our Safe Bill also does our mechanical and our plumbing permits and stuff like that. So how many did we do? We issued eight hundred and sixty-one permits in the calendar year two thousand twenty-four. These eight hundred and sixty-one permits generate about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, just short of three hundred thousand dollars in, in, in fees. On average, in all permits considered, we have a review time of about ten point six days. So, so that's kind of our, just a quick overview of how we're doing, just superficially. If you break it down by types, the most common type of permit that comes through the city are mechanical permits. These are, three hundred and seventy-three of these permits. Planning permits are the least common type of permit. And like I said, planning, mechanical plumbing, and some building permits are reviewed by a third party. However, if you look at what generates fees and what creates revenue for us, building fees, building permits generate actually the most revenue compared to the mechanical stuff. So about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is generated from our actual building permits. One thing to note is our tree permits, we provide to the public for free, so that it does not generate any revenue for us. And again, just re, once again, reiterating, mechanical plumbing and some of the building fees are absorbed by our third-party contracts. So it's not just straight new revenues that gets absorbed by that contract. So by time, so when you look at the types of permits that we are processing, you look at the review time, right-of-way permits take the longest time to process. And before we get concerned about that forty-day timeframe, the, the explanation, I went ahead and I was like, hey, what's, that's weird. So I asked Mike and I asked Dan, like, hey, what's the reason for this? And they're saying, because this includes the time it takes to coordinate with outside agencies. So what you're seeing with that forty-day planning time, that forty-day review time, it accounts for the time it takes to respond and get Department of Transportation and WashDOD to all respond to our messages and stuff like that, which unfortunately kills our averages, because I'm an extremely competitive person. And I like seeing efficiency and speed, and that, that brings our numbers down. Mechanical and plumbing permits are typically over the counter, and that's why they have that point-six processing time, because they're applied for a permit in the same day. When you look at our total, our average processing time for permits that are processed by city staff, it takes about nineteen days to process a permit. Just, you know, anecdotally, I don't have any, you know, don't ask me for evidence to back this up, but anecdotally, if you talk to developers, if you talk to people who are in the area and they talk about permit time, we're pretty good. We're, we're pretty fast on our permanent processing times. You know, a lot of cities are telling developers it takes six to seven weeks to review a permit, and we can usually get things done in three to four weeks. So we're feeling, feeling, feeling okay. I think we can do better. But, you know, overall, nineteen days for when you re-eliminate the mechanical permits and plumbing permits from our processing time. So we, we are seeing declines in permit activity if we look at our historical trends. So, but there's some interesting trends that are happening. For example, if you look at common maintenance-type permits, like re-roofing, fences, tree permits, plumbing stuff, these are types of permit activity that you shouldn't really see too much upcycling or downcycling. It should be pretty consistent. You're always going to have to replace your roof. You're always going to have to, you know, fix your plumbing. You're always going to have to replace fences and stuff like that. But you're seeing a significant decline in a lot of these permits. And roofing permits, for example, have since two thousand fifteen have declined by almost eighty percent. Is that an eighty percent decline in permit, in roofs being replaced? Or is it just an eighty percent decline in people bothering to file for a permit? The answer is, we don't know. But we do, we do think that the decline is, is maybe telling that there is a lot of permitted activity that's happening citywide.
Is that a permit that's done on my building permit? Or is that one that's done through here?
These would be all permits or would be processed through my building permit. So we're seeing overall kind of a decline, and notably, the only permits that hasn't kind of declined in this common maintenance-type permits are, are plumbing permits. We, we kind of kicked around that idea of like, well, why could this be? And the kind of operating theory is that plumbing is typically a lot more regulated. And, you know, people typically don't want to screw up. But the only, if you want to do something in your own house, you're probably not going to, you know, experiment with your plumbing. You're probably going to off-source that to a licensed contractor, and they usually follow the permits. But roofing, but, but anyways, that's kind of conjecture. But the point here is that a lot of these type, maintenance type of permits are going down, and they should be probably consistent.
Do we get any feedback from residents as to how mybuildingpermit.com is working?
We don't get too much feedback. I mean, I think, but everyone is pretty familiar with my building permit, just because that's kind of the regional norm. And I know that sometimes people do have complaints. Anecdotally, we've used, as we've kind of started exploring, as we've researched other permitting software platforms and other kind of intake systems and stuff like that, there are a lot of differences between my building permit and what their competitors are in terms of other systems are maybe more efficient and less clunky and more straightforward. And there's a lot of ways that we can improve that. That's a, you know, I don't want to give, I don't want to give away the plot, but that's going to be something we'll be coming back with next week, talking about permit software and stuff like that, and possible improvements to our overall development pipeline.
Well, the reason I ask is maybe I'm an anomaly, but a couple of years ago, I had to replace my fence. It was falling down. And so I went back and forth with staff because I wasn't sure if I, the fence I wanted was permitted under our fence code. I found out it wasn't, so I just went with a stock fence. They told me submit on mybuildingpermit.com, so I submitted it a couple of weeks before I was having the fence replaced. Never got a response back. And then like five months after I had the fence replaced, I got an invoice for something that I didn't pay. And I'm not sure I ever got a permit, but it, it did not work for me. I don't know if I was an anomaly, or that's why I ask, are there people that are applying online and it's not functioning correctly? And they're not getting a response, and they're just going ahead with the work.
I think in general, our system has a lot of bugs like that. There's a lot of gremlins in our system. And I think the, the, the easy explanation for this is that it's all being tracked with fifteen-year-old software and a super antiquated system. So I think those gremlins are just, it kind of invites them to live in the system that kind of creates issues like that. I know we have heard from some developers, some complaints about that, but, you know, in terms of a recent outpouring of complaints, I'm not sure. But I can certainly talk to our permitting tech, too, to see.
Yeah, I'm not sure people, they may not complain. They just may say, good, I'm going ahead with the work. I haven't got any response.
Exactly. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of reasons for why someone would decide not to file for a permit or, or, yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Paddock?
Is there any onus on licensed contractors to ensure that there's a permit before they do this work?
Well, typically, if you're a licensed contractor, I guess, when you say onus, like, I know that, like, a lot of plumbers, for example, are concerned about their licensing and stuff like that. And they want to make sure that they tend to follow the books and stuff like that. But some contractors, I'm not sure if they're licensed or not, I don't want to point fingers at roofers, but, you know, if you have a type of business where you can just kind of set up shop and then just knock things out in a day, right? One or two days, just kind of quick things out, move out, then maybe there's not a, a strong code enforcement mechanism for catching these guys in the act and asking for permits. But typically, licensed contractors will follow the rules when provided. But again, if there's, once a city kind of develops a reputation for maybe not aggressively following up on code enforcement, stuff like that, then, you know, there can be, you know, once it's out there, then guys have to cut the corners.
And we don't necessarily have a very active code enforcement process.
We, we.
This isn't something code enforcement would catch, because you're working inside a house. You're not, you're not going to see anything.
Fence and roofs really is the one I'm, what I'm interested in, because that's the one that's dropped.
And I know in previous, in previous years before my time here, I do also know that when we did have code enforcement or a building, or we did have people who were more able to be proactive in that role. In the summer months, you just sit in a car and roll down your windows and listen for a hammer. And then, and just kind of look for guys doing work. You see a, you know, work truck rolling up outside of a house. Just, hey, what you working on? And again, kind of going into future permitting needs and kind of some of things like that. If you had, if we had really our code enforcement system, this is really a wonderful conversation for, further down the line. But the other issue is that there's not really a system to be able to have either officers or maintenance guys. If they see work happening, we don't really have a system where we can just, on your phone, type in an address and see, is there a permit active for this work? Like, what's going on here? There's not really any way of being able to map or visualize where development activity is occurring.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is a code enforcement issue. It's really a front-end issue, because I bet that most of your contracts you do isn't going to have a line item for permits in the built-in the contract. But the contractor or the plumber or the roofer, they got jobs lined up back-to-back-to-back. So if they apply for it and don't get a response or don't get a time, I mean, they're just probably going to move ahead with the work. Because they got a schedule to keep with other jobs. So I think it's more figuring out what the bugs are in the front end, so we're doing it properly, getting the permits issued rather than trying to enforce a problem that we're creating, or we may be creating.
That's, that's true. I mean, I will say anecdotally, from our, from our public works guys, that they've seen people do a work, ask if you have a permit. And then the response was, well, what are you going to do about it? And, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the culture. We're working to change that, you know? Again, extremely competitive person, so I, I don't like that answer. And so that's part of the cool, that's part of the things, part of my mission is trying to bring back code enforcement and bring back a stronger mechanism, try to catch this work kind of happening in the act and try to bring back a culture of making sure that work is getting permitted. But it's important because for every permit that's not applied for, that's money out of our pockets, right? That's revenue that we're missing out on. That's, and that's in an era of fiscal concern. That is something that we got to make sure that we're making sure that every dollar that can be collected is being collected.
Councilmember Cavallari has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding this page, do you think that if you look at the numbers in the years where there were spikes in, in development activity, isn't that relative to the economy when money was cheaper to, to borrow, to people to do fixer-up jobs, I myself included on those years? On their homes? Is, is that potentially what we're looking at here versus the interest rates the last four years?
Are you talking about development activity or the previous slide?
Page your head up.
Oh, so, so, yeah. So that's a great question, Councilmember. So what we are seeing is an overall decline in development, and development of finance is certainly one of those elements. I will say, you know, in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, you still had those kind of rock-bottom interest rates and stuff like that. But that was also COVID, where a lot of work kind of slowed down to a crawl. Another element with this is there's a lot of things that can go into development trends at finance, not just interest rates. It's also the cost of lumber, cost of steel, cost of labor. But generally speaking, yeah, the availability of, of money is a huge determination in a lot of these development trends. But, you know, I think the main takeaway here is that, you know, you see by numbers, a lot more single-family development being a, this consistent source of revenue. But if you look at the overall effect that you have, I guess, on a pound-for-pound basis, right? The commercial multifamily generates a lot more in revenue from single projects and stuff like that. But to answer your question, it is spiky, and it, but I think a lot of that does depend on, of, it's, a lot of different things can factor into kind of development finance.
Does, a, a, and are we, can we ask a couple more questions over here? Does our, does our fee structure, does it pay for itself or, or, or do we go out of pocket as a city for that?
It does not pay for itself.
That's what the fee study is looking at.
And that's, that, correct, Mayor. That's what the fee study is for. A good example of this is a mechanical permit. We charge about fifty-five bucks. And Safe Bill charges about a hundred and twenty dollars to do that mechanical fee, to do that, that same permit. So we lose about sixty dollars every time we do some of those permits. Sometimes we make up for it, right, for a big project valuation. But there are some elements of our development fee structure that haven't been updated for decades. And there are some things, like, for example, a tree permit, if you have a, a tree permit can, you know, some of the, it's complicated ones, could take three or four hours of staff time, and that's all just done subsidized and just completely for free.
And, and now that you point out the tree study, is, is that something we've just always historically done as a city, as a service? And what do other cities do around us?
So as I understand it, there, the city of Mill Creek used to pay, used to charge for tree permits, and then no one was doing it. So they reduced the price to zero because they realized that we're probably wasting more money chasing after rule breakers than charging, than charging anything. But, so, but other cities do charge. Some will charge. It varies by city by city. I think Muckel Tio, I think I said that once, took me eight months to figure it out, but I think I got there. So like, they will charge, I believe, a hundred dollars for the first, for the tree permit. But if they catch you catching, cutting down a tree without a permit, then it'll go up to like five hundred bucks. It'll give you a punitive rate for not going through the proper permitting process. A lot of other cities, not many cities offer that as a, as a free service.
And the only reason I, I suggest that even the study that we're doing here today and that we're, the fee study we're conducting is not, the city is not looking for a, a money grab here. But if we're investing man-hours and, you know, and outsourcing other contractors, then there has to be equity there. There has to be some sort of balance where we're not losing money every time we, you know, there's a project or, or development activity. So sooner the better, I think, with that fee study.
Absolutely. And, you know, Councilmember, that's a great point, and I think we're going to stay lively. I think cost recovery is a good framework to operate here in that we're not looking to, you know, get rich off anyone, but we just at least need to make sure that staff time is appropriately being charged.
Well, and it's not likely the big developments that this is an issue. It's the small permits. It's the ones that are getting outsourced. Councilmember Duque?
So I pressed it because I had, I, what we just discussed right now with Councilmember Cavallari about the, you know, not being a money grab, but cost recovery, the phrase, was exactly why I pressed my button, because you had said something like, we're losing all this money. And I was like, oh, I really hope that's not, we're not, for people listening, or even just for us, that's not what I'm going after. Like, that's not like the intent that I have. It's, are we, are we doing what we should be doing, what others are, are doing? So I think that part was answered. So then my only other thing that I felt so far in this presentation, and maybe it's coming down, but I'm not sure, is why is permitting so important? I think is in this, because I, I believe I understand as a person why getting permits for plumbing or roof, like, things are important. But why is a city, is it important for us to have these things in place or tree permitting? What, what about it, why, why is this something that we as a city should be doing?
So that's a great question. And I think there's probably, the answer is threefold. First and foremost, people should be permitting, because permitting requires we have our experts and we have people actually evaluating to make sure it's done safely. A perfect example is someone building a retaining wall on their property without anyone looking at it. That could substantially undermine the, the structural integrity of the whole building and compromise the entire house if you haven't had that properly designed and built out. Or someone wants to build their own garage addition or something, lay their own foundation. Given, you know, the kind of funky geology of the Pacific Rim, right? We probably need to make sure that everything is built according to actual standards, that things aren't going to collapse and fall apart, and make sure that fire codes are being observed. So one, permitting is a really important thing cities should care about, because it ensures that when development does occur, it's done properly, it's done safely, and it's being done according to our exacting standards. The second reason why it's important is because, you know, like I said, we're not trying to get rich off people replacing their plumbing. But what we want to do is we want to make sure that we are in a place to be able to accurately track and capture revenue and process it on, on a, in an efficient manner. The reason why for that is in a, in a good year, right? Or let's say hypothetically, we had a big redevelopment happening of the, of a certain area in the town center, right? Hypothetically, we had a big redevelopment happening of the, of a certain area in the town center, right? The, a, a large amount of development from that is going to generate a ton of revenue and gen, and a ton of fees, right? So we want to make sure that the permitting system is working efficiently and working correctly to make sure that those are being properly assessed and tracked. And it's not just that area, but just all kind of development in general. There is, uh, that fee collection that we want, that we care about. We want to make sure that we're actually generating revenue from, from. From development. Um, this is why a lot of cities are, have, um, are really in favor of development because development. Does provide a huge opportunity for revenue. And then, um, yeah, so I would say those are probably the two main reasons why that, um, permitting is really important to us. And then finally, the third most important reason is, you know. Forgive me for sounding like a broken record, but it's really important that we have a clear and consistent and we have a predictable city. From customers to deal with, right? And if we don't have a permitting review process, we don't have a development review process that's clear and consistent. It makes it really hard for folks to want to build here. It makes it really folks, hard for folks to want to do business here or to live here. So what you want to do is you want to make sure your permitting system and your permitting software. That we're processing things accurately, we're processing things on time, we're doing things fairly. But we also want to make sure this information is available to the public so that, you know, I always, I always tell my staff. A development permit or development product shouldn't be like a novel. You shouldn't wait till the end of the chapter to find out what you have to do next, right? It should be very upfront from the very start. About what exactly this development is going to require. And when, when your permitting system is out of whack like that. Then it can cause a lot of frustration with customers, with developers, with everyone. And so having a. A, a, uh, having a, a, a clean and tight permitting system is super important, just also just for the city operations.
I think the answer differs though, depending on land use permits versus building codes. As for the land use permits, we will have a vested interest in making sure they comply with our comp plan and development regulations. The building codes are set by the state. We, we don't have any discretion really in that. And if we chose not to enforce them, I'm sure our city attorney would advise us against doing that. Or else we're going to be sued left and right if something happens in one of those houses that we ignored the code and. And that causes some kind of bodily or personal or property damage. Councilmember Steckler?
Jeff, I, I've got a, a few questions that, yeah, just kind of read them all up and probably answer them together. Um, one of the things in our last meeting that really helped me was when we had that report that compared us to other cities. In revenue opportunities and, and taxes and that type of thing, what's right, what's wrong, looked like. I, I would be curious about how we compare to other cities in regard to permit revenue and types of permits. I noticed that event permits are, are, you didn't have them called out, but that's, that's definitely a. A, a, a revenue opportunity because it's a cost to us when an event is put, is put on. That caused, that costs the city money to take care of it, monitor it. You know, clean up after it or whatever. Yeah. So there's, there's, uh, that's understandable. I, I'd be curious about any, any other ones and, um. I, I was looking for, for trends and what's interesting about the trends here was. You gotta take out these two big developments that, I, I like on your historical. Um, chart here of two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen, because that really skews it. I mean. Re- really what we have been doing is slowly dribbling down in our, in our permit revenue. So I think historically I can. I'm, I'm pretty safe in saying that our trend is that we've, we've been generating less and less revenue and, um. I, I, the three things that I would be interested in how you could address this. Uh, to help us turn around permit revenue, because I think permit, permits are, are critical component of keeping our, our costs in line. You know, with, and we're dealing with the cost. One is, um, obviously the, the comparison piece, but, um. How, how, how can we educate our community? About permits and the types of permits that are critical and what type of communication vehicles can we use on our website, but also? Any outbound marketing that we can do, you know, to let people know that, you know, if you, if you, if you do some replumbing and you're downstairs. You gotta get a permit for that. If you, if you, you put in a water, I. I know, talked about this in personal, uh, uh, put in, put a water heater and change your furnace out. You gotta get permits for that to make sure that the right stuff is put in, you know, you're doing the right thing. Um, so how do we educate our community that these permits are a part of living here? Um, because a lot of people I don't think even know, um. Enforcement, you touched on that. Without enforcement, you really don't have a permit. I, I think a permit revenue, uh, oppor- opportunity here or, or, or planned. I mean. You, I love what you said. Um, you talked earlier. What if you stop somebody who's doing some work and say, do you have a permit? What are you going to do? Well, clearly there should be a penalty for every permit that's not attributed. And if you're doing something, you didn't get a permit for it. Then it would cost you a hundred bucks for the permit, but now you got to pay five hundred dollars because you didn't get the permit, started the work. So permit enforcement and, and clearly outlined. In the communication to our, our, uh, uh, everybody that here's the permit structure, here's the penalties for not complying in those permits. Um, and I think that was. My three, the education and, and enforcement and how we compare to other cities. I'd really be interested in that.
So that's a great questions. Um, we'll start with the fee study question. So for that one, um, that's going to be part of the fee study, actually. Um, there's no easy chart to do that right now because every city is a precious snowflake. And every city does their permitting system completely different. Some people are already on a cost recovery model. Even Mill Creek, we have some elements that are, we just have a flat rate for some projects, so then some are just based on. A percentage of the total product evaluation. So it's, it's kind of difficult right now to give you that chart of an easy comparison between them. Uh, but once you, but that's part of the fee study, that's part of the process is that there is going to be, um, kind of a global study so that when we do. Make our recommendations, how we can kind of tighten and adjust our, our, our fees that we're not taking from the approach of. Well, how could we just get, make as much money as possible off of this, but rather how can we at least? Meet what the average is of our peers and just do what our peers are doing, right? And I think that's a. Maybe a, 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 a better framework to operate from. Um, in regards to the, um. You are corrected. There is a general downward trend happening. Um, however, it is important to note that where do you do those, see those spikes? You know, sometimes it's important to ask like, well, what happened with those spikes and why is it important? The reason why I mentioned that. Is yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot less green space in the city to build on. There's a lot less greenfield spite. However, if you look at the overall city and development capacity, there's a lot of structures that are thirty, forty years old. There's a lot of aging buildings that are at, reaching the end of their useful life. Um, and, um, sorry, anybody who just turned forty. Um, so. And once you start looking at that, there is, then we're talking about redevelopment instead of just development and that redevelopment has a lot of potential for us in terms of revenue opportunities. Um, in terms of the education piece to it, that's another great question. You know, I think once we. Once we pivot towards a better and improved permitting system and stuff like that, a big part of that's going to be. Kind of working on how can we create a system that's better for the public to access, that's easier for the public to know. To be able to report an issue that they find in their city or report a code enforcement violation or. Just how do they, how making it as easy as possible for someone to be like, yeah, I want to put in a fence. Okay, I, I know exactly where to go and it will give me exactly what I need to know, what I need to do. For those kinds of permitting fees. So I think a big education piece is a big part of this because I'm a firm believer that you can't just do only, you have to do enforcement and education.
Councilmember Paddock.
Not for discussion now, but when you come back, um, I would recommend thinking about the role of HOAs. We have such a concentration of HOAs here that could be part of that code enforcement process and education process, maybe bring back what your thoughts are next time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next time.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit on that. I mentioned in the past, the community engagement. Program that we're starting this year. The first emails are actually going out this month to the HOAs and. Uh, property management companies regarding, um, a lot of different things and we could add permitting into that as well. And I will mention too, one, another value add of. Uh, these permitting s- systems is getting the data so we can better forecast what our revenues would be going forward to. So over time, it's more data collection.
Councilmember Cavalieri.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I, I just want to kind of piggyback on, on all those comments for just a moment because what the city manager just said and, and Councilmember Duque's question is. Is we always have to answer the why and, and, and there's several reasons we mentioned, but I think. Sometimes we forget the safe, safety aspect of it. And what I mean by that is the last thing we want is. Is unlicensed or, or unskilled labor, moving pipelines, uh. Doing electric breaker box replacements and, uh, we're a very wooded city. We have cedar roofs. Where they're mandatory in some communities and, and, and all it would take is one bad electrical job to take down a block. So. So I, 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 I support this very, I think it's a very important component and, and, and permitting is, is not just. Just the value of, of a city trying to recoup its costs, but it's, but to maintain everything, our character, our charm. And, uh, and as well as being able to do that safely, uh, especially when it comes to stuff like electric. I think you mentioned water heaters and reconnecting, uh, gas and whatnot. So. There's a lot to it. So I think if we answer the whys, I think the public would probably get on board. So I'm. That's all I got. Thanks.
Mayor Potem.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be quick because I'm pretty much, um, adding on to Councilmember Duque and, um. Councilmember Cavalieri's statement that he just made is for me, um, every part of it's important, but. I, I, I know from working in property management before how important it is to get permitting, to make sure that things were done right. But I think everybody else doesn't necessarily know that if they don't have the experience. So. I think it is important that we are making sure that part of the messaging is for people to know. That it's important that they're getting their permits completed because. We want to make sure that we're protecting their investment in their property and that it is done safely. And those are really important reasons to have someone who knows what they're looking at, come and look at it. So I would. Hope that we are going to make sure that's part of any messaging. Cause I think that's. Ultimately, we want everyone in the city to be safe and we want to make sure that they're getting what they think they're getting.
Right. Depending on any further questions. Uh, thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we have no old business on our agenda tonight. We have two items of new business. The first is a resolution related to the twenty twenty six, twenty thirty five. Interlocal agreement for Chinook salmon conservation planning within water resource inventory area eight.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council, and that's a, I'm glad you got the mouthful to deal with. It's one of the longest titles of a presentation you can have. There's a bunch of slides in here that are in the packet. I put those in there. They came from the RIAA eight folks. They offered to come and give you the presentation, but. Sean said he and I would do it together. So. He's going to fill in on it. If there are any hard questions, Sean gets to handle it. Excuse me, Councilmember Paddock gets to do this. So these are a bunch of the presentations. Really, it is the Lake Washington Cedar Samamish watershed. And so you'll see in a picture a little bit. Later at the top, we've got the Samamish River, but way down, way, way, way down south, it's the Cedar River. And Lake Washington in between, which feeds into Puget Sound. So we're called RIAA eight and I'll show that to you in a minute here. This whole thing started back in nineteen ninety eight, salmon, Washington State Salmon Recovery Act, where I came from some federal thing. We're down at the point where there's been a couple of versions of this, twenty, two thousand and five was the first conservation plan, two thousand and seven. They put together the, the, a plan that was, um, enacted when I was back on the RIAA or a long time ago and then did a. A, uh, plan update in twenty seventeen. And here we are again, about ten years later, it's time for another update. Next slide. That button doesn't want to work. There we go. So this all comes from NOAA fisheries goes to the Washington. Uh, State of Washington Recreation Conservation Office that around the state, there's eight regions and we're in the Puget Sound partnership within Puget Sound. Over there on the right, there's fifteen lead entities. Those are each of the riots. So we're number eight, but there's riot one, two, three, four, five, and that yellow one is where we are. Different thing. And that's kind of a blow up with that. So you can see we're up at the top of that in Mill Creek. Everett just joined not too long ago. Part of the south part of Everett feeds into North Creek. And so North Creek goes down to Samamish River, goes to Lake Washington and way down there at the bottom, the upper Cedar River. Is where a lot of the activity goes on and Councilmember Paddock or other people who serve in the sport will know that spent a lot of time talking about salmon in that watershed. But we're all same, part of that same watershed, all those salmon together end up out, coming in and out of, uh, Ship Canal. Uh, and what do you call it? Through the locks.
Ballard locks.
Yeah, through the Ballard locks. So there, all these fishes are coming through there eventually. The plan, again, their plan covers a lot of different things about habitat goals, use best available science, recovery strategies, capital project list, a whole bunch of things go on. That's what this group. That are council member, uh, for us, represents us, but also other groups are involved with putting together that plan. They revise every couple of years. The plan for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty five, it doesn't have a lot of changes, but it really focuses on these things that are listed there. And I put this up mostly the previous ILAs, there was the two thousand and one to two thousand and six when first getting started. Seven to fifteen, they fixed a lot of operational things, sixteen to twenty five, didn't change it too much, but here we are in the ten year plan is what's being proposed. Funding, there's about seventy seven or sixty thousand dollars that comes in from people like us. That formula is based on. An average of your percent of population in the whole area, the percent of the assessed value and the percent of the area itself. And so they've got a, it's a pretty good formula. It's been the same. Our piece of it is only eighty one, eighty one hundred dollars a year. Uh, they do leverage quite a bit and that's the point they'd make with this slide is there's a lot of grant funding that comes through, it's passed through to the partners. The city has had RIAA eight money in the past, some of the. Root wads that are out here in North Creek, a long, long time ago, came from a, a project we had. We haven't had any projects in a while. Again, a lot of focus is on the other end of the, the watershed, but there's an opportunity, particularly now that. Bothell's a member, we're a member, Somish County is a member and Everett's a member. There's an opportunity, I think in the future. For us to say, okay, there's watershed projects that make sense for North Creek. And so that's a lot of stuff that. Reese is doing is making sure the water comes out of our stormwater system, goes to North Creek, gets clean, and then it goes on down. So stormwater and. The, the RIAA eight and all, all put together. Couple more slides here. This is they're just lauding their accomplishments and I don't remember what the time period is. If, uh, Jason was here, you would say, but they've had a lot of projects with a lot of sponsors over a lot of miles and a lot of acres. So they're pretty proud of those things. Yeah, there's the folks. If you want to go back and ask them questions, you can ask Councilmember Paddock and answer those questions. Really for tonight, what we're up to is the, the ILA needs renewal. There's only really small administrative changes. The, the body went through these. They've all agreed on these. And so now the draft is going out this year, everybody, all the jurisdictions are being asked to sign on. It includes a few things that are simple, but important to the, to the agreement. Explicitly need to state that state, local tribal governments and agencies and special purpose districts are eligible members. It was a little fuzzy before, so it's not just twenty nine cities, it's twenty nine, including. Some other, you could probably rattle them off, but it's other interested parties, not just jurisdictions. Um, they revise, they're revising the process to elected, select administrator. Right now, King County does that. And they've done a good job on it, but there's the process for selecting that administrator every couple of years and how to do the budgeting is being revised a little bit. It, it's an artifact of the last ILA that when nine. Or more members approve it, I think it's seventy percent of the total value, nine. And seventy percent would be approved. So whether Mill Creek approves it or not. When it comes down to it, doesn't make a difference, but it's important for us to approve it. They want everybody to sign on, but we can't, couldn't stop it. We can't change it. It's, it's proceeding ahead. Uh, our formula, like I said before, is less than eighty, eighty two hundred dollars a year. And they're collecting signatures this year so that they can have this rolling by the twenty twenty six. And we recommend approval. So without take any questions.
Thank you, Director Todd. Any questions? Don't see any questions.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the twenty five, twenty six. Twenty twenty six to twenty thirty five interlocal agreement for Chinook salmon conservation planning within. Water resource inventor, inventory area eight, also known as RIAA.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Brings us to a resolution related to walker roller safety and chief, make sure you explain what those are intended to cover. Because I keep picturing my ninety five year old father and his walker going down the street and some kid on one of those uni wheel things flying down the street. So.
Do my best, Mayor.
I could not find any definitions in the agreement, so please educate me.
I'll, I'll try my best. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council. Um, we're going to continue our, our ILA discussions this evening, um, with a. Possible ILA with Washington Traffic, uh, Traffic Safety Commission again. That, that, this is very similar to our Target Zero. Teams ILA where we are focusing on high emphasis, uh, enforcement, high visibility emphasis enforcement. We are going to cover now, uh, an additional ILA, which is additional funding from, um, the Traffic Safety Council. Um, for additional fifty thousand dollars towards region ten, which is what we are associated with. Um, so again. Walker roller safety, this is a graph that is focused on areas around transportation. Um, bus stops in regards to pedestrian and any type of roller conveyance such as bicycles. Strollers, um, scooters, skateboards, those types of things, anyone that's on a wheel device as well as pedestrian safety. Um, this, uh, ILA is from now and through till through September thirtieth to twenty twenty five. We're a little bit late. On our, um, involvement in this ILA. Um, the original intent was us for to join next year. However, pushed a little bit with region ten representation and we've been accepted and we'll hopefully get this ILA through this, this evening. So three focus areas for the ILA, um, utilization of media platforms to educate the public in regards to walker roller safety around pedestrian, uh, around, I'm sorry, transit areas. And we've identified transit areas along five two seven and one thirty second for this. And we've identified transit areas along 527 and 132nd for this particular emphasis. Utilizing specific numbers of officers to focus areas to influence or modify driver's behavior. Obviously enforcement modifies behavior and we see a reduction in traffic related incidences. Also will, also will use officers to educate the public. Those traffic stops won't always have to end in enforcement action. They can also be opportunities to educate the, the violators depending on the severity of the offense. So again, funds from this ILA similar to the high visibility enforcement ILAs that we've done in the past go to supplant overtime that our officers will be working in, in, in partnership with other agencies throughout the area. Again, there's no cost to the city on this, this, or no cost share. With that, I'll take any questions. Here's the motion.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Hearing none. Are there any motions?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interagency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety for receipt of a portion of the Region 10 Walker Roller Safety Grant awarded to Sammamish County.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, that brings us to our proposed new initiative. And why, you might ask, is this a proposed new initiative? John brought this up in his report on April 2nd. Recall that this matter was first brought to our attention back in March of last year when a resident of Parkside made a proposal to put a gate at the entrance of their community by Heron Park. We asked staff to follow up with that gentleman and the residents there and they had some dialogue in the weeks that followed. And I believe Martin gave us a report on that exchange at a meeting a few weeks later. And nothing much happened on that since then. And then I think about four, six weeks ago, we all got an email again raising the issue. This has never been an agenda item. We've never had it as a matter of new business. So I am putting it on the proposed new initiatives for discussion to see if there's any interest in doing anything about this. So I'll first give John an opportunity to speak to it since he brought it up in his report. And then we'll open up the floor and see if there's any consensus on the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I wanted to bring this in front of the council to have an opportunity to talk about this, their opinions and see where all the other council members are at. Because there, there is concerns about gating what was a public street. And essence, does that now make it a private street? Who is responsible for that? Does the gate operate all day? Does the gate operate only from midnight till 6:00 AM? Does that change things? Is there any way that if our citizens wanted to? Because we are a city, the HOA is primarily made up of small individual, I don't know what you call it, cul-de-sacs, large cul-de-sacs with the single entrance. And they're, the desire, and some of them currently do have gates on them, but there's desire of other ones now. They're saying, we'd like to look at gating it, be 100% responsible for the cost of the gate, maintenance of the gate. Are there any issues that, how, how could we make this possible? As well as why shouldn't we make this possible? I wanted to explore both of those to see, you know, maybe if you open up your mind to it, maybe there, maybe this might be a good idea, or maybe this is just really the worst idea we've ever thought about. But to really explore both ends of it and say, you know, because there are benefits in our citizens' minds of putting the gate on their community, both from safety, also from increasing valuation of their property, that, that type of, type of issue. So I'm, I'm just open to the council comments from the both, both a pro and a con standpoint.
Do you have like a kickoff, pro, con?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll kick it up on a couple of things. I'll kick it up with some of the cons that I've heard. From the city standpoint, when you put a gate up in a community, then who's responsible for those streets in there? That were once public streets, do they now become private streets? Are they responsible for the sewer, the electrical, all issues, safety? Even police, fire, that type of thing. What, what happens when you put the gate up?
There's a simple answer to that because our code prohibits it right now. You can't put a gate on a public road. It's code.
Yeah.
We'd have to change the code.
You'd have to change the code. But the code was created with some thoughts in mind as to why, why do we make that a code? Why do we say we're not going to gate communities? And I think some of those cons I just mentioned. Then I look at some of the, the pros, just for food for thought from, because I've talked with the individuals in Parkside. If the gate goes down at midnight and goes up at 6:00 AM, it's, it's, it has public access all day long during the daylight hours. They're really trying to deter individuals from, you know, entering the cul-de-sac with anything but a, I lived there, attitude from midnight to 6:00 AM. There's a park that is historically, and I lived in that area and it's true, does draw a lot of young, some, some rambunctious, yeah, undesirables. Yeah, it's armed. Udlums, yes. No, whatever, but, but, but people to the park and it creates concerns about drug use as well as alcohol, as well as littering and, and, and some vandalism as well on the park. So they, they were hoping that maybe if people can't park in there at night, get their cars into the park to hang out, they'd have, obviously the gate, people are still going to walk around it or get, get into it somehow. Every gated community we have here in this, in, in Mill Creek, you could still get into that property, even though there's a gate. It's a, it's a, it's a mental thing. How could it, how could it hurt the city if we make sure that all of our public services, the gate is, is designed to interact with, with their codes and so they can have access to homes in there from fire, police, or other, other, other service aspects. And in the case of Parkside, their, their feeling is why, why shouldn't every community have that opportunity to create some additional security enhancement to their, their, their individual community, as long as they're willing to cover all of the costs associated with that decision?
I want to respond to that last point really quick because not all communities can do that. We've heard that loud and clear before from our residents that there is a difference between the circle, the communities in the circle and the rest of the communities like Heatherwood West that does not have private cul-de-sacs. So there's a large section of our community that would be very sensitive to that and cannot do that. So it would not be an opportunity that could be made available to the entire city. Councilmember Duque.
Thank you very much. For me, because I, and I don't remember if I had started this when you brought this up initially. For me, it's a very clear situation that public roads that should remain public and should be accessible to the general public. So I'm, if the neighborhood was coming and asking specifically to take over the roads and maintenance and all of that to be able to gate it for their security reasons, I'd have follow up questions about that. I'd want to know, you know, what that cost would look like for them to take that over for the ownership, our, our legal part for it, the accessibility of the park. Because in that specific instance, I wouldn't want the gate to be anywhere near the park side and parking. That should still be public without a gate. Because as soon as you put a gate up, even if it's not closed, it immediately feels exclusive, unless they also wanted to take ownership of that park, which that's questions. It doesn't mean I support it, but those are like my follow up questions. So for me, in this particular issue, I, I would, I would say, if it hasn't already been shared with this community, that the, what the cost or what that ownership of the roads, not just the gate. The gate's a minimal situation. And I say this as, as someone who lives in an HOA that owns its roads and has looked into gates. So the gate aspect isn't maybe of the cost or however that looks. But the road maintenance is a lot. So if they fully understand what that cost would be and they want to do it, then in that case, and they have that information, and they come back to us saying, we do still want it, then I would do the follow up questions about access to the park. How do we, you know, what does that whole new arrangement look like? What does this legally need to do? But unless they're willing to look at 100%, not just maintenance of the gate, but also of the road and the infrastructure associated with maintaining roads. I, I, I don't have any interest in changing our code for that because I think the reason why it's there is so that our roads are accessible to the public for our payments and, and what we do it. So that's, that's my, that would be if there was a next action associated with it, it would be to, you know, request the, the city to, to go back to them and say, this is what you would need to look into. But that means that we're also directing staff for their time.
That's what we're trying to avoid here. We're trying to say, do we want staff to investigate something or not?
But that's what I'm saying. So I'm saying that I would be willing to ask to move forward with directing staff to provide like a general, this is what the process would be to take over the roads.
We already have that in part of our packet.
Yeah, so like if there's additional, I'm sorry, if there's already additional information that they need, it would be helping with that. That would be the most that I want to do. But I don't think they've come to us saying they want to take over the road. Actually, I know they haven't.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Duque just was pretty eloquently stating exactly my thoughts for the most part. I happened to have the grandkids over the weekend and I happened to be in Heron Park and happened to run into Mr. Nichols over the weekend. So it was, it was a good conversation we had and, and I, and I kind of expressed my concerns and thoughts about it a little bit. But I also, it's my understanding that, that they don't have a complete buy in of the community and the, the community itself does not. My understanding, I believe were his words, that, that not everybody wants to cover the costs associated with it. And I'm paraphrasing, but I think I'm pretty close. So I think before even having a discussion, whether or not we're changing the code, that, that, that should certainly be addressed first is, is it, is if, is if this is truly what the community wants and before we entertain it, then, then we have to have everything on the table. And, and then, then my second piece was, was I know I talked about this before, was could this potentially slow down responses to police and fire? Could it? I know other communities have had gates and whatnot, but it's a pretty wide road. This is one of the wider roads in the community in our city. And so the gate would have to be pretty enormous or, or two sided or however aesthetically, I'm not sure what it would look like. So, so I still have a lot of questions, but I think we, before we address that, we have to make sure that, that this is what the taxpayers, the homeowners in that region want and, and understand fully the costs associated with it. And it's not just putting a fence up and maybe greasing the skids once in a while. Thanks.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'm really glad that we are having this discussion in public. I had asked for us to do that last year. So I'm really happy that we are getting around to doing that now. Second, I agree with Councilmember Duque and Councilmember Cavallari. My, a couple of my questions off the top of my head on this was, one, the first thing I thought of is, wouldn't that be like gifting public funds to them if we were to let them just fence in a public road? I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel that it's moral for us to go and fence off a private, fence off a public road that the whole public is paying for, for only them to use, even if it is just at night. And I have concerns that this is a public park and you don't want to give the impression that this is only for them. And all our public parks belong to all of our residents. So to me, it's really important that they remain accessible to all of our residents. Now, if they wanted to go and take over the maintenance, the whole process of turning that road and the roads in there into private roads and putting up fences, then that would be something for us to look at what, what they need to do to do that. And that would be a slightly different discussion. But I still would not be comfortable cutting off the park from being accessible because I don't think unless, like Councilmember Duque said, they want to take over ownership of that park as well, that that should be blocked at any time because it, it's, it's the entire city's property. And also, I, I do believe that in the past, they put these things in here in our code for reasons for the whole city to feel like they, they do belong. And I, I agree that not everyone in the city can have a fence and gate off their community. And that creates divisions between us in the time when we really desperately need to be coming together as a community, not being divisive and dividing each other. So that's my thoughts on this right now. So I guess unless they, they are willing to take over and do the process to make the roads private, I'm not in favor of looking at changing the code at this time.
John, this isn't directed at you, but you asked the question, you wanted to have a discussion. Is this a good idea or is it the worst idea ever? In my opinion, it's the latter. It's the worst idea ever.
Because?
I'll, I'll get to that. And one is the equity. Two is, second, I live on what might be the longest straightaway of a public road in a community in our city. And I'm woken up several times a year by kids drag racing down the street. I don't think the solution is putting up a gate to Brighton, which also has a park at the end of it, which also has people there odd times at night and early. I don't think that's the solution. I don't care if the residents all agree or not. This is a policy issue for me and what this council is here to decide. As a matter of policy, I don't think we want to have gates up around all our neighborhoods. I think that's why the council adopted a code provision that says you shall not put gates up on public roads. And as a point of fact, it didn't used to prohibit gates on private roads until those gates were put in that are in place today. And then they changed the code to discourage them. They don't prohibit them, but our code discourages them. I just think this sets a horrible precedent. I mean, I can see if we were to go forward with this, I can see Evergreen, Juniper, I can see Brighton. I can see all the communities coming right along saying, okay, us too. Setting aside the logistics. I mean, I don't think these people realize that they'd have to pay the fair market value for the right of way being, being vacated. If they even went through the process, it gets split down the middle, split to the side and your frontage, then you, you pay us for that roadway. I don't think any of them have taken that into account. I'm, I'm sorry, I just think this is a bad idea and it's what set a horrible precedent. I wouldn't support. It's not to say that we don't need to look at issues with the park and people getting in. I don't think putting a gate there, if you put up a gate there, are we going to put a little drawbridge on the footbridge that goes into the park at Heron Park as well, so kids can't get in there? It's not, putting a gate is not going to stop people from getting into the park if they want to get into it. So do we need to look at what's happening in our parks at night? Absolutely. Is this the solution to that? Absolutely not. So I would not support the staff, other than looking into other means of deterring activity in the parks at night across the city, not just Heron Park. Because I think this happens at all the parks. I wouldn't suggest that staff invest any more time in evaluating the idea of gating off a public road. That's where I'm at.
Well, first of all, I'm not here to support.
I, I know, that's why I started.
Yeah, I'm only here to support the conversation we're having.
I understand.
And, and, and to make sure that the citizens felt that, that Parkside citizens, in fact, that ones that have been pushing us, that we hear them, but we're making a decision, what we think is right for the city. But point of clarification, a couple, a couple of things if they were here that they've made very clear. There is a gate, there are gated communities where the gate is down 24/7. And you can't get into that community, you know, anytime during the day. What this is proposing is not a gated community, but, and including the park. This, this, this gate does not go down until dusk to dawn. And access to the park would remain 100% the same. The only time the gate is down and you say that there's, we're limiting the access to the park is we're limiting access to the park when the park is technically closed. Our parks are closed from dusk to dawn. We don't, you know, we, we can't, we can't support them. So I think, I think that's a, they're, 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 and, and, and it's something to consider, not that I'm supporting, but just consider, is there are gated communities, they're 100%. They own the road. And there are communities where the gate, they are not gated 100%. But there is a, you know, a security or feeling at, at night that they don't want non-residents driving around in their, in their communities. They have the right, if they're willing to cover the cost, to, to, to put that up.
So how, how do we address the issues that neighbors have at? So how how do we address the issues that neighbors have at Highland Park or what's the park we just renovated up in Heatherwood, Silvercrest Park? Where the neighbors might have the very same concerns about kids coming in and using the parks. We can't gate off those parks.
We can't, no. Could they if they wanted to?
No, they're public roads. Our code prohibits it.
From dusk to dawn?
No. They're public roads.
Yeah, but uh.
I think the mayor's point.
Internal roads to neighborhood.
I think the mayor's point about setting a horrible precedent, it's certainly not wasted on me, and I and I think that's exactly what it does personally.
Then and that is totally understandable. That is a precedent that would be set, so.
And I and I recognize this.
As a council, and that's, you know, we're on agreement on that, and.
But that's part of the reason why we want to have this discussion is we can't keep having this every six months. We we need to have a position as this council so we address the issue. I don't want to say once and for all, but for now.
Agreed.
Councilmember Paddock.
I I just want to jump onto one of the things you said about, so then what would be next, which is, how do we have a little higher level of visibility or or um deterrence around things that happen in the parks? I um, long story, but just a couple of days ago, this is a direct quote from one of the folks in in our community. We live in the parks in Mill Creek. Idiots. I wonder if anyone has a door camera with with footage. Actually, that was me. And the uh and the response was about what's happening in the in the park is living across the street from the park is becoming a nightmare. Sad. And I I'm sure there are other folks that feel the same way, sitting sitting across the street. At at times, I'm sure it's beautiful to have that in your front yard. And at other times, this was regarding some street racing and some donuts that were being not eaten, but driven uh in the streets. You know, they're frustrated and they just want to figure out a way to deter the frustration. Um, idiots or not, deter that frustration. And if we could spend the same type of time, maybe in another meeting, how do we help enable our public safety team to deter more of that or make it appear as if more is being deterred, because I know they're working very hard on these things? It might be a balance that everyone can enjoy. Just just a thought for for future reference.
I would really support that. Um, what we're coming down to is the the underlying issue here is we are a community with a number of parks. And if you live near these parks at night, there's a challenge, there's a problem. What can we do, if anything, to help, you know, maybe alleviate or reduce the amount of activity at our parks af- after after dark and and keep them safe and quiet for our residents? I don't know if the answer to that is, but I think that's really what's, starting all this with Parkside, it's all it all started with Heron Park.
I I just want to be clear, I did not say limiting access to the parks. I just said something should be.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm not, I just want to make sure. Yeah, I'm saying that from dusk to dawn during the night, there is an issue in our parks, wherever the park is. Could be by the mayor's, parked by the parked by the mayor's house. Have same issues.
Yep. Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, it's basically illegal activity, right? The parks close at dusk. It's that simple. There shouldn't be people in the park after dusk. So, yeah, it's figuring out a way to deter it, to reduce those times when teenagers are getting rambunctious and doing donuts and leaving their garbage in the park and making noise and what whatnot, you know, it's that's the solution, I think, rather than putting a gate up. It's a public road. I agree with the mayor. I don't think anybody would want to pay for that frontage if you divide the road in half and give everybody their portion. I I don't think that that's feasible. So I stand on no gate.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, ultimately, I think from my perspective, this comes down to a policing um issue. Um, and to me, I think we need to look at whether or not we need more lights, more cameras. The police to be able to go around to the um to look at the parks at night. Um, so to me, this is more of a issue a- around policing and getting accessibility out there and getting to where we can see what's going on than putting gates up.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just real quick, um policing is part of it, but um perhaps some community ownership as well. I know uh there's plenty of uh uh neighborhood watch templates uh that would work, that would certainly report to the police that when there's folks uh doing doing or even eating donuts in the park after hours that that and I'm not trying to make light of of of.
Donuts?
Shouldn't have said that. Um, I'm not trying to make light of it. I'm just trying to be serious that that perhaps that um I know we did it in Webster's where had the same issue, had the same issue with uh the drag racing down that main strip of uh just doing our own little bit of community policing and just uh taking turns and going out there and and reporting to uh to police services that, hey, there's there's folks in the parks, the park's closed, and can you just roll through there? And and sometimes just as the chief will attest, just shining the lights in there and driving a car past is 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 enough. And uh and and to Sean's point, I think he made a very good point. Living ac- right across from the park has has the ultimate benefit and then perhaps the ultimate detractor as well. At some points, it's a matter of time and perspective. So uh there's no perfect answer or solution, but I think um but again, I think I think the fence is um, I don't think the council's ready to put up fences.
Chief.
And thank you, Mayor. Um, just for a little background, I did some searching through our records management system. And since January one of twenty twenty-three, the Mill Creek Police Department has responded to twenty-three incidents at Heron Park specifically. Majority of those are suspicious circumstances, noise complaints, animal complaints. They range all times of the day. So um really, we're talking about in an extended period, twenty-three calls for service as of late. Um, with our officers contacting several individuals, our officers going out and responding and not being able to contact individuals because they've since left um the area before the, uh, just recently after the call was made. Um, we are, we are doing our diligence to to try and address this issue. There is a an issue of just the park itself being so accessible. Um, and it is also very uh has very secluded areas in that park. And so it's so easily to enter off of uh roadways that are within the Parkside neighborhood as well as off of Village Green Drive.
Right.
So um it's kind of unique. It has a nice nature trail that runs around through that park as well, which is very secluded. So, you know, the officer's not having the ability to just um check on the park and we will try and do that as often as possible, but the opportunity for them to get out of the car, walk the trails, do that type of thing, it's it's very difficult, given the time that they have to do that type of patrol. Obviously, our first requirement is the public safety and responding to criminal activity that is in progress um that has been prioritized um in regards to severity of the crime. Um, we're doing that as well. So these aren't always addressed as uh quickly as as we'd like to see them addressed. Um, but an officer does respond to each and every call. I believe we took eight reports in that same time period in the in that area of Parkside. Um, most of those were in regards to malicious mischief and a couple of uh package thefts from some porches. So not really associated with the activity that was occurring at the park. Uh, one malicious mischief incident at the park was for sure with the uh sign that was uprooted, um that was reported by Mr. Nichols. So those those things are being documented and we are addressing to the best of our ability.
So I'm hearing no consensus to have staff pursue whether it's to allow a gate at Parkside. But we want to look further at what we can do, general safety in the parks. Yeah, potential way to address this. And I, we can work with the city manager and deputy city manager in our upcoming meeting to talk about how we might bring that back. And one thing, we have a city chat on May fourteenth. I don't know if there's a way to make that partly a forum, advertise it as a way for people to come and talk about these types of issues, but we'll put together a plan for bringing this back so we can have further discussion on how to deal with some of the issues that are going on in the parks.
Yeah, I I I would agree that clearly this council is not in any way supportive of of gates in the in our community, in fact. On on public roads, yeah, yeah, but gating off public roads. We're 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 a hundred percent not not supportive of that. But we will look into how can we mitigate or reduce malicious activity at the parks within our our city limits. That I think is, you know, something also the council's clear on.
And if it, if it does come up of what about those other communities, I believe the code was changed after those communities put up the gates. So the code used to allow it on public and pri- or not on public, but on private. And then the code, I believe, was amended after those gates went in to change that, to say that they're discouraged. So um anyway, I think we've given direction for the evening on this topic.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, well, now for first of our two study sessions, Mr. Carmody, an introduction to Surface Water Management Manual.
Now for something a little uh, something to help cool down a little bit, a little bit of stormwater. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Council?
Keep the day job.
Thank you. I I I I would love to keep my day job. Thank you. So uh, this is going to be a uh presentation regarding the Surface Water Design Manual and the city's Surface Water Code. So my goal with this to get is to give you guys a background on surface file man- Surface Water Management, the laws and codes that go along with it and how it impacts the city codes. The reason behind this is because, and I'll explain more in depth later, is because we are looking to adopt the new Surface Water Design Manual from the Department of Ecology, as well as uh modernize and streamline our Surface Water Code. So first, a regulatory background. Uh, this is very similar to uh some of the presentations I've done before, where the Federal Clean Water Act created the regulatory basis for stormwater, which was then passed on to the Washington State Department of Ecology. The Surface Water Design Manual is related to the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System or N P D S permit. Since we got a, since we have a phase-two permit and are a phase-two permittee, one of the requirements of that permit is that we adopt a design manual that is approved by ecology. So what is this manual? The one that we adopt is the Surface Water Management Manual for Western Washington. And the requirement actually comes from that specific code section, where it says that we have to adopt that manual or an approved alternate. Now, most of the approved alternates are done from phase-one cities. So or phase, either from ecology or from phase-one permittees. So groups like Homish County have their own manual. Uh, King County, those are going to be the two biggest other options to the ser- to the uh ecology manual. And just for an example, the city of Seattle also has their own manual. These manuals are a lot more specialized for the regions that they're in. So for instance, the city of Seattle Stormwater Manual has a lot of information about combined sewers, and I'll talk more about combined sewers later. But those are sewers that have both um storm drainage and sewage going through them. So they have specific designer guy- design guidelines for that, so they have to separate those out based on what basin you're in. So there's a lot more items. We currently have adopted the Ecology Manual, and so that's kind of what we would like to stay with. So it'll be the minimal change for developers. So the history of stormwater management in the beginning. I knew it. So the earliest stormwater and plumbing systems were designed to prevent flooding and to move sewage out of cities. In fact, this is one of the earliest evidence we have of civilization in the world. There's one civilization that all we have is their plumbing system. So uh, these are would be considered a combined sewer sewer system in today's terms, in that they combine sewage with stormwater. Basically, the idea was just to get it out, get it out of the city, don't flood the city, and get it to a local stream. Um, eventually, these moved underground, so they would put uh pavers over top of them so people could walk over it, but it was still combined. Then they found out that this stinks. Literally. So what happened is because these are combined, one of the issues that combined sewer systems have is that they have uncontrolled discharges. So when a high amount of stormwater comes through the storm uh through the system, when you get a nice big storm event, nice big rain, it pushes all the sewage out. And so you get uncontrolled outflow, and that caused a lot of stink in the um in the receiving water. So like your streams, your lakes, all those items got to smell really bad. This also provided uncontrolled stormwater runoff to streams. So the next step was to separate the storm s- system from the sewage system. Which then leads us to the next item, because these continue to develop, and that was actually the basis that most cities were built on, starting in the twentieth century. So that continued on for seventy-odd years. But the peak flows continued as additional development happened, the peak flows continued to flood uh the downstream properties. So they decided to figure out how to hold the water back and release it at a slower rate, so it didn't flood the downstream property, and that created flow control. Flow control was one of the items that was actually put into the regulations after the Clean Water Act in the nineteen seventies. So these are the detention ponds you see. Those are their ponds that are designed to fill up and release it at a slower rate. These use single-event modeling, which is basically saying, here is a rainstorm, it happens over this period of time, it drops two inches of rain. Deal with it and then release it at a slower rate. So that became common, but as the eighties came in, they started to see um point source regulations and or point source issues, where there's still pollutants coming into the water. So it's still, your stormwater is still going out into the streams, but you just light the stream on fire. So that's tends to be a bit of an issue. Um, so then they decided to provide, to require water quality for new sa- for new developments. This is to remove the pollutants from the water before it goes into the storm drainage system. So this this removes things like sediment or other pollutants. Today, there are things like phosphorus, uh uh heavy metals, um uh other fertilizer-type items, other pollutants like that, that we have to look at and address. But then we, in the Pacific Northwest, because we are the special snowflakes that we are, we have our own type of rainstorms. Like our rainstorms happen over a longer period of time. So in in most places, you get a rainstorm, it is twenty minutes, you're done. Here, you have, it rains all day, and it's a small amount of rain. So we have a very different type of rain than elsewhere in the country. And we also noticed that streams were suffering under the single-event model. They were start- starting to scour. So the streams actually started to die because of the water was going through it too quickly. So what we what we figured out is that we need to go back and look at how the rain actually falls and model over a long period of time. So that created the continuous flow modeling, and that ca- became a requirement in the early two thousands. What we do with our models now is we actually take historical rain data for the last seventy to a hundred and twenty years and then run it through the system that you that you've set up. And then determine if it ever over tops or if it ever has problems, because what actually happens sometimes is you'll get not big rain events, but you'll get a bunch of medium rain events in a row. There was one year where um when I was just starting as an engineer, that we had five ten-year storm events in a row, day after day after day. And ten-year storm event means that there's only a ten percent chance that you get that rain event that year. Yeah, that's, that is right. So um, so the what I have here is also the uh the the software models that we use to do this. The one, main one we use is Western Washington Hydrology Mo- Model, or W W H M. Um, this one is put out for free by the Department of Ecology, so that's our base, basic model. Uh, M G S Flood was commissioned by WashDOT. That, when you do have to pay for it, it's a little bit more robust, but it still does the same things as W W H M. Um, King County used to have their own model called the King County Runoff Time Series, or K C R T S. It was a DOS beast that um I'm glad I never have to use again. And then the EPA has their own model called the Stormwater Management Model, or or uh SWIM, uh which is not supported in our state. So but then, as we kept looking, we we kept forcing and forcing and forcing things, trying to get things working correctly, trying to get them doing it, and we're like, hey, maybe nature has a good idea. Maybe we should start trying to emulate nature instead of trying to fight against it. So we looked and did additional research into natural systems and found that if you start to integrate uh so- uh soils and plants and all of those items into it, it works better. You get better flow control, you get better water quality, you actually get groundwater recharge. So places where you used to not have any groundwater, suddenly there's water there, and suddenly it's it's following. And suddenly, it's, it's following the old paths it did before we came along and messed with it. This led into low-impact development. These requirements started coming in 2012, uh, with, uh, it was suggested in the manuals, and then 2015 is when it became required. So this is the manual timeline. So this is where the manuals came from. The first, uh, statewide manual was the Puget Sound, or the Stormwater Management Manual for Puget Sound, which is in 1992. Uh, and then we have continuous flow control in 2001, 2005 updated that, low-impact development in 2012. In 2019 is the next issuance of the ma- next main issuance of the manual, and that is where we currently are. Currently, uh, have adopted that manual. And then the 2024 manual is the newest one. We are currently evaluating the manuals to take a look in the 2024 manual to find the, what's going to happen with it, what the big changes are, and how it will impact the city. So when we look at the manual, this is a beast. Uh, there are five volumes plus appendices in the manual. The manual itself is 1,350 pages long, and I have to know pretty much all of it. Um, one thing I do want to define here, you're going to see it throughout the, the next slides, is best management practice. That is BMP. So that could be anything from sweeping up, uh, dirt before it goes into a catch basin, to a, uh, biofiltration swale, to a detention pond, to all those kinds of things are best management practices. So, uh, these are a list of the five sections. I'm going to go through each of the sections, let you know what's in them, uh, just so you guys know. And I, just, I'm giving you guys a background on this, so that when I come back and tell you, hey, section two changed, uh, this section, section two changed, you kind of have an idea about what's in section two. So, section one, what requirements apply to my site? Basically, this is saying, I want to do something. What do I, what requirements do I have? So you look at the project type. Is it a new development or is it redeveloped? Is existing 35% uh, hard surfaces or greater? That is a redevelopment. Is it a parcel project or is it a road project? Parcels have different requirements than roads do, and they have different triggers for, uh, increased requirements. Uh, project areas, basically, it's broken out into three different levels. All projects have to meet certain, have to meet one requirement. If it's 2,000 to 5,000 square feet, it only has to meet five requirements. If it's over 5,000 square feet or greater, it is nine requirements. And then if, um, then there are other considerations like, um, the value of the property, the, um, how much you're actually constructing on it, how much hard surface is existing and how much you're replacing. Those kind of things come in later to add additional requirements. So these are the nine minimum requirements that every project must meet. So when I go and I review an incoming drainage report from an applicant, they have to address all nine of these. There's an entire section that lists every ni- all nine of them and say how they are addressing them and how they're meeting them. So prepare, preparation of a stormwater site plan, that is preparing a drainage report and plan for us. Uh, construction stormwater pollution prevention plan. That is, I'm just making sure, because I haven't looked at this in a little bit, so I just want to make sure I'm not getting ahead of myself. Construction stormwater pollution plan, that is a SWIP. Uh, just another one for you guys. Uh, that's how you prevent stormwa- uh, sediment and stormwater from leaving the site during construction. Um, that is also, uh, I'll get to that in a minute, sorry. Uh, source controlled pollution, that is, uh, what, that's what makes Reese happy every day. It is preventing pollution in the first place. How do you prevent that oil barrel from leaking into the storm drainage system? So that's the methods you do there. Preservation of the natural drainage system and outfalls. That basically says that you can't change where the water goes when it leaves your site. So if the water leaves that this point in the site, it has to leave at this point after you build. And so, um, you can't change that, and you can't change its threshold discharge area, which is basically the infield fly rule of, uh, of stormwater. It's complicated, and it's really difficult to understand. So, uh, I've literally taken four-hour classes on threshold discharge areas. So, um, onsite stormwater management, that is a special way of saying low-impact development. So, yeah, um, that's for that. Runoff treatment, that's water quality. Flow control, wetlands protection, we need to actually make sure the wetlands keep getting the right amount of water, so that they don't either flood or dry out. That's the big thing with wetland protection. And then operations and maintenance, which is also what makes Reese happy. So volume two is construction stormwater. In there, it gives you directions on how to prepare a SWIP. There are thirteen, uh, elements of a proper SWIP, which I'm not going to go into with you guys. Um, this all leads into Ecology's Construction General Stormwater Permit, which is an NPDS permit. It's a separate one from the one that we do, but it, and it's required for sites that are over five acres. No, over an acre, sorry, one acre. Um, it needs to get a permit from Ecology, so. Uh, volume three is modeling and reporting. This is how you actually do your stormwater modeling and how you actually write up your reports, what we want to see. This is an example of WWHM is the image there. So that's one of probably twenty screens that I have to go through when I design with this. It's a lot of fun. So this fully details continuous flow modeling, when it also does some single event modeling, includes isopolluvials and those kind of fun things, um, which are rainfall maps. Uh, and then how we prepare the plans and reports. So the typical requirements somebody has to design to for flow control, you have to match all flow durations between one half of the two-year storm event and the 50-year storm event discharge rates. So that means, uh, the two-year storm event means that there's a 50% chance that that storm happens, or that storm happens every two years. So half that flow rate, half the amount of water that comes out, the 50-year, that means it's a 2% chance. So we, this means that at those discharge rates, you have to release the water at the same rate as those, uh, flow rate, for, for the same period of time at the same rate. Yes.
Water leaving the site.
Yes, water leaving the site has to be at the same rate, at the same ti- same amount of time. So that's where we're getting to the flow control modeling. For water quality, you have to fully treat at least 91% of the runoff from the site. And then the removal of total suspended solids and other pollutants varies based on the pollutant. Uh, TSS is typically 80%, other pollutants are 50% to 70%. So that's how you'd actually go and design these things. Those are the standards you have to design to. Source control. I was trying to find a leaky barrel, but I couldn't find one. This is preventing the pollution from, uh, entering the stormwater system. It has both physical methods, like actually put, uh, putting container, containers under containers to prevent any spills from getting out, to best practices on, you know, making sure things are covered, making sure you have adequate spill supplies. Those kind of things are all under the source control title. Uh, and that leads into our illicit discharge detection elimination system. Volume five is the meat of the manual. This is where you get into the detailed, uh, design of all of the BMPs. So for flow control, runoff treatment, low-impact development, it includes very, very, very detailed information on them. So for instance, if I'm doing a stormwater pond, the design for that, I believe, is 20 pages long for, of requirements for that. Um, if I'm doing an infiltration system, this gives you how you're supposed to do the infiltration tests, where, uh, how kind of reporting you have to do, and then how you actually design each of the individual items. So this is the meat of the manual. This is where everything gets really technical. Um, it also includes the maintenance requirements for all these items, and so that's what we expect them to see and understand when people are applying to do more construction. So our municipal code. Uh, the Milk Creek Municipal Code, chapter 15.14 is our stormwater cer- surface water management program. So that creates the basis for the stormwater utility. We do run a utility here. It's a stormwater utility. So that is, um, we provide a service to take the stormwater from people's homes to a receiving body of water, which is a creek. Our regulations include the adoption of the Surface Water Management Manual, development regulations on how people are supposed to develop, what they're supposed to provide us, inspection requirements, and water quality regulations. So, um, we just recently updated the inspection requirements and water quality regulations, but we will take another look at that as we go through this, uh, in the next steps. So the first thing we want to do is we want to adopt the 2024 manual. So our NPDS permit requires its adoption by 2027. Um, however, about seven years ago, the Supreme Court, the Washington State Supreme Court adopted, uh, a ruling that makes it so that the surface water regulations do not vest. So the manual does not vest. We have to keep up with the manual. And so if somebody is doing a development, and then we have to adopt a new manual, they have to change in the middle of their work. So that's a big wrench. So, um, the reasoning behind it was, is that these codes come from the federal government, and so we have to stay in compliance with the federal government that, uh, then supersedes anything that we have with our vesting laws. So because we have a possibility of a large amount of new development coming in Southtown Center, in other areas, um, we really want to make a consistent development environment for developers when they come in and don't want to change rules on them in the middle of the, the stream. So even though we have to adopt this by 2027, I think that it's better for the city to adopt it earlier, to make sure that things are consistent. Then we also want to go and do code updates. Um, our code has been implemented piecemeal. Some of the items were just implemented to, uh, check a box in that, uh, for instance, our low-impact development, uh, regulation is, we encourage this. It's pretty much what it is. So we, I would like to incorporate more items in here and also streamline the code to make it more readable, legible, and so that there aren't things, because I've found regulations hidden in strange locations. So if, I would like to, we would like to revamp to create a piece of system and also to create a stormwater permit. Uh, one of the items that we've, well, we have a permit, but it's not really been activated, and so we need to reactivate it and modernize it. One of the problems we've been running into is that oftentimes, smaller developments, if you do less than, um, for instance, if you're doing a large driveway, that may not trigger a clearing and grading permit. It may not trigger any other permits, but it's more than 2,000 square feet of new and replaced hard surface, which means that it has to meet the stormwater regulations. So we need some vehicle for that. So we need to have a surface water permit for that, just so that they can say, yes, we're meeting all these items. So, um, we want to make sure that that is working properly, so that we stay in compliance with our, uh, our ecology requirements and our permit requirements with, with, for the NPDS permit. So our projected timeline for this, um, we will work on our code updates for this and get a full rundown of the changes that are coming in the 2024 manual, how they'll impact both private development and also city capital projects. Um, and then we will be checking back in with you, uh, it's currently projected on June 3rd. Since this is part of the, uh, zoning code, we have to go to planning commission, so that will be on June 17th. And then we are targeting final adoption in July. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question, I think, for Grant. My recollection of the Supreme Court case, it wasn't an issue of superseding. It was this goofy rationale that stormwater regulations are environmental regulations and not subdivision statute. Can't we provide as a matter of local code vesting to say that an application, a subdivision application would vest to our stormwater code?
Typically, what needs to be done, uh, is that when we have, uh, when, when we have a sub- like a subdivision, as you were talking about, it, we would want it to vest to the current code. Because as you know, there-
Yes, that's what I, but we could provide that in our local code. So if, so if an applicant was coming in two weeks before the code was going to change, and they've designed all their civil engineering based on not the code changing, on the manual, they've invested several hundred thousand bucks in their design, and then the new manual is adopted. Can't we provide by our local code that they'll vest to the one that's in place at the-
You know, because the vesting's at the time the permit is submitted.
The permit is submitted? Which, which permit?
When you want to do the, uh, surf- uh, the surface water, excuse me, when you want to do the, usually at the gra- uh, the-
Site disturbing activity.
The site disturbance provisions. I mean, that's been the problem, is that there's this disconnect between, you know, we, we have projects that get approved, um, and then they don't proceed in a timely manner. And then the, then we have a new, um, stormwater code, uh, storm, uh, stormwater manual that supersedes it. Um, and that's when, you know, that's typically when we've had these problems. It's, it's not when somebody wants to, it is raring to go. It's when there's been delays. And there's a, a, a new manual that is adopted. And we've adopted, we have to adopt the new stormwater manual. We've done that by code. So they have to comply with that, uh, that new manual. I don't think we can make our, uh, the code at the time of the approval by local ordinance.
Well, let's talk offline, because I'm thinking in particular about the sub area. If an application came in for that big sub area, my understanding is, because I think I've done this in the past, is through the development agreement, you can provide that this manual is going to govern through the life of the project. Okay, let's talk offline.
Uh, for clarity, we did just have to require somebody who did have a development agreement to change to the current name. At, uh, and this was in discussion with the city attorney.
Okay.
Uh, thank you for, oh, sorry, I'm waiting for the mayor.
Councilmember Duque.
Um, thank you very much for this. Incredibly helpful, um, and, um, for, to places as we continue with this process. Um, in terms of like staffing and time, um, by having to start by working on it now versus when maybe you were thinking through working on it later, is there any, is this impacting any other projects that we were, um, direct, like, you know, that is, that was planning on going at his head? Did he, was there any, like, any big reshuffling that's going to have to occur?
No.
Okay.
This is actually primarily on my plate. So it's fine, uh, but I have basically been tapping the other engineers to do reviews, to help out with those kind of things, and then we will synthesize it together. It has not had to bump anything off of our plates.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Stackler.
Great presentation. Hey, just a quick question. Um, I can see how clearly we, we, we need to control this with the potential development that we've got coming. Do you see, um, any changes or impact to residents' interaction with stormwater?
Not primarily. Um, most of that is through our, uh, phase two permit, which is, uh, the NPDS permit that, uh, we have directly with Ecology. So that requires us to do education and outreach, those kind of items, so that'll be directly with them. The other thing that is coming up through that permit is we'll have to start retrofitting basins. So we'll actually have to start fixing old problems, uh, rather than just letting them stay. So that's, um, that's that. But as far as individual residents who are not doing any construction, this should not have an impact on it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as the car said, let the good times roll. Let's talk about compliance and final agreed orders on our NPDS permit. Top that.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, I just wanted to bring this, because we're going to cover all of this, but I didn't add it to your packet, because it's a lot of reading to go ahead with. So I did this presentation so that you don't have to read all that. We can summarize it down. Um, we'll be covering our standard NPDS compliance for the 2024 reporting year, as well as updates on where we're at with the agreed order, um, with the Department of Ecology. Uh, so we have submitted all of our standard compliance documents prior to, uh, March 31st reporting deadline. Uh, that includes our swamp and our annual report. These have both been posted to our website, so citizens can, um, review them if they'd like. That's also required by the permit. All of our agreed order corrective action items with the due date of March 31st, 2025, or earlier, have all been met and turned- Have all been met and turned in to our municipal. Stormwater permit planner via the way it was requested in the agreed order, which is by email. And she's received them all, sent back confirmation that they've all been received on time. They're currently going through them, but her brief look over conversation with me was. I looked through and it doesn't look like anything's outstanding from those items. The city is currently on track to comply with all other agreed order requirements and state permit requirements. NPDS compliance, we made our new twenty twenty five stormwater management plan. Swamp. We've got a lot of fun acronyms in stormwater. We put it out for a public comment period for two weeks. We were kind of behind the ball typically. I try to give as much time for the public. To review it so that they have as much say in as well. So we'll look for those. For ways to increase engagement and ways to increase the length of time that they can look at it. We also updated how it looks and how it's written, so it's more understandable. To regular residents, so it's not reading a giant technical document that. Doesn't mean anything if you don't know all the right words. As you can see, the previous one, no photos, blocks of words. Just going through. It met, it meets the requirement, which is good, but the new one, we kind of. Tried to reduce the amount of technical language. We tried to increase the use of. Pictures so people can kind of have reference points for what we're talking about. We were also, the swamp requires you to make a. Compliance budget. Basically, there's all the sections of our NPDS permit. We now have a document that says, here is the cost of running compliance. This isn't the cost to operate the surface water utility, it's just to meet the compliance portions. Then there's increases and decreases depending on events that occur. But this does a pretty good job of saying how much we spend in certain places. For compliance. Our agreed order compliance, we were given fourteen corrective actions that we were required to provide documentation to ensure compliance. Basically documents saying, this is all that we did this year that meets. The compliance regulations that we didn't meet before. The city provided documentation for all those items by the March thirty first, twenty twenty five deadline and prior. We still have three outstanding actions in relation to the agreed order, but they're still on track to be met. One, we have to submit June first, a report about our behavioral change program. We were talking about Heron Park earlier, if you've been there, we are starting a pet waste program to just reduce the amount of. Uncollected pet waste to increase it being properly collected. It reduces the amount of fecal coliform in our local waterways. We have a TMDL for that. So we're running the pilot there. And then on June first, twenty twenty five, we have to provide a report. That whole program usually was supposed to take the entirety of the last permit, which is five years. We're doing it in six months. But then we're gonna look through, revise, see what works, see what didn't work, ask the public, and then. Provide a report on time with the required permit deadline. Then by June thirtieth, we're required to write a compliance plan, so. All these sections, we're required to have a plan stating what we do annually. To meet those tasks, whether it's, you know, public education outreach. Each section, behavioral change, general awareness, stewardship opportunities, it'll have to have what we do fully for that. Now that I've gotten everything turned in by the thirty first deadline, we're on to that one. But that one is on track to be met and one stipulation that was written in the agreed order, it's not. A legally binding plan. When we write out, this is what we're going to do to comply in the future. We don't have to do it that way. So we're writing out what we currently do. And in the future, if there's something that better suits residents, it better suits the city, you know. Financially, employee man hours, everything, if it fits us better, we can adjust later on. And then we have to provide monthly updates, which I provided our April fifteenth one. Yesterday, so that's already in, and it just lets them know where we're at with these compliance items. Just to show you a list, I'm not going to read them all out, we'll get to them as we go. But those are all the permit sections that each one of. The corrective action items are related to. Corrective action item one was our stormwater management action plan. That's like. The swamp, the swamp's for the whole city, the Smap is for a section of the city, a specific basin. We chose the Middle Creek Basin, we contracted out making that to the contractor OTAC, we worked with them. Consistently to make sure, you know, retrofit programs. Behavior change programs in the targeted area are all. Aligned with what the city is looking for as well. That was also provided for a two week public comment period. In the future, again, we're going to look for ways to increase that and increase outreach for it. I forgot to say on the stormwater management plan, thank you very much to marketing and communications. And especially Jody, she had to do a lot of work with me to do a lot of editing and rewriting. I get very technical when I write, so she's like, whoa, slow down, we need to make sure everyone can understand this. So, thank you very much. Corrective action item number two, we didn't have a behavioral change plan. Initially, we started with a very basic illicit discharge plan to have something to meet the requirement. Looking at the new permit when it came out, it had. Requirements that weren't going to be met by that program very effectively. So we came up with this one focused on, there's a lot of residents with pets. We went out and checked all the parks, we did see an issue with uncollected pet waste, so. We went ahead and started there. We have the pilot program out, we've been looking for it for reference. To collect the data, you got to go out and count what you see. And when we did the initial count at Heron Park, there were fifty two uncollected portions of pet waste. Which is right outside of a stormwater pond, so it flows right in and then right down the system. When we put the initial outreach out and went back to collect, I think it was down to thirty two. And then it's gone down even more since then. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but it looks to be working and it looks to be helpful. Corrective action item number three, we had our IDD program specifically. Screening and methodology selected from the required manual from the permit. It's a manual called the Herrera Manual, they were a contractor, they used to. Create a manual for illicit discharge screening and source tracing methodologies. Basically, we had to go in there and say, how are we going to screen twelve percent? Of the entire stormwater system annually for illicit discharges. There's methods like. Outfall screening, catch basin manhole inspections, business inspections. And you have to select one to be the main way if you have. If you're going to use other methodologies, you still have to have one that will be able to meet that twelve percent alone. We selected outfall screening. There's some. Technical follow-up stuff that you guys probably don't need to know as far as what you do when you, you know, see, smell, touch, feel. All the olfactory senses, you know. But we wrote that up, got it submitted, it also serves as. Kind of like a standard operating procedure, a lot of these do, so that compliance will always be able to be achieved in the future. If all of us are gone, someone can still find this document and know how to follow up if there's a spill. Number four was a city-specific plan for responding, so. The last one was how we look for it. And then this is how we receive the complaints and specifically gather. Samples, data follow-up. This is also an SOP, it also. Gives us a better idea for, it's one of those code compliance items, oh my gosh. That's my fault. So sorry, guys. But it's one of those code compliance items that we want to have, you know, consistent, it's not different between. Who goes out, when they go out, what they go out for, so this allows a little bit of consistency on that front. Item number five was for construction inspections, specifically you need to go out. And inspect sites to ensure that their temporary sediment erosion control or their SWIP plan. Is being met. So what they say they're doing, they're actually doing, going out, checking if, they said there's going to be. Catch basin inserts in these basins, going out, checking not only that they're there, but they're functioning properly to make sure. That construction isn't harming our stormwater. We didn't have a good system of recording that information. That was one of the things specifically outlined, so now. A hard copy inspection form is done, that is scanned in. And saved, so we have hard copy records and digital records of all of them. Gives us, you know, two systems for compliance. And then there was also like a written SOP of when we go out, how does. When someone submits a permit currently, how does that then end up making sure that we go out? That was all written up, all of these, if you want more information, I'm more than happy to provide. I made most of the presentation information into separate PowerPoints, so that staff can easily review them in the future. Number six was private systems, operations and maintenance, how do we inspect them, how do we follow up with residents? And how do we maintain compliance? The picture you see is a hundred and eighty two. Inspections that we did last year since I started and. Most of them come back with, probably need to trim vegetation if it's a pond. Probably need to clean out sediment, there's some where, you know, we can't complete the inspection because there's so much vegetation. Or because you can't access something, things have rusted shut because they haven't been inspected. But we created an online form that we'll be able to transfer over to our new asset management system as well. So it'll do the exact same thing in our asset management system, so we won't lose any data and we won't have to come up with a new system. But it allows us to visually track and, you know, tie that to the asset. So where the pond is, where the manhole is, where the vault is. So it's helpful for residents, we can provide maps, things like that for where you need to clean things out. Then the seventh was operation and maintenance for public systems. We had to gather a list of all of our public systems, you see on the top there. And then the same form that we use for the private systems owned by the public. It's the same form we use to inspect our own facilities, that way we're not holding the public to a different standard than we're holding ourselves. We're doing the exact same thing as you, so when we say, hey, you need to clean something out, we can say, we also needed to do it too. And then there was also an SOP written on how to do the inspections, everything like that. Our swamp tracking for compliance, I showed that earlier, this also will help. With budgeting in the future as well. Stewardship opportunities, we had to provide a list of stewardship opportunities. In the crunch time that we had, we had. Our adopt a street program, we kind of infused stormwater information into, so we give. Stormwater information on illicit discharges as you walk and clean the street. Look, if you see them, check a basin on the curb line, if you see foaming, let us know. And then we also had National Cleanup Day. We really want to look for more stewardship opportunities. I've been talking with Jody on, you know, what groups we can interact with, who can we. You know, use strategic partnerships to add more stewardship opportunities. That just helps people know what's going on and can help the people who care. You know, help the system. Then public participation, like I said, there was a two-week public participation period put out, we put that out on. Our website, we had Dan notify at a city council meeting. And we put it out on all social media, we paid to boost those social media posts. So that they were seen as many times as possible. Looking at the data, a lot of people saw it. We didn't get any comments, so maybe we've got to make it even more entertaining, we'll figure that out later. It's, it's so hard to make underground piping really, you know, interesting. Then number eleven, we had to train all staff. On illicit discharge detection, any staff that can go out to see. An illicit discharge needs to receive the training. So we had almost all staff trained, there's some, you know, IT isn't going out. On average, so. Some employees like that, but also all police were. They've been very helpful in calling in vehicle wrecks, things like that, so we can make sure we go out, check what's going on. Make sure it gets cleaned up properly. This is just a slide, we also had to provide a spill hotline for the public, we've done that. If you see something, give me a call. Then number twelve, we had to create a source control business inventory. The manual outlines source control procedures, then we have to do source control inspections for businesses that have a high pollution potential. This is a really big Excel document that has a bunch of information that has, you know, contact information, things like that. So I kept it to just the UBI and their company name and. Business name, that way we're not giving out a bunch of information. But it's color coded, so all those orange ones have the highest priority, those are the ones that are going to get. Inspected annually, then when it goes down to blue or goes down to yellow and blue. Those are the next step down in priority and. We just have to get through those pollution potentials, we have to do eighty percent. Or twenty percent of that list annually, which we met as well this year. Then number thirteen, progressive enforcement, you guys, I came to, to update. Our stormwater code just to make. Stormwater code relating to illicit discharges, inspections, code compliance, private facility inspections, local water quality parameters. And responsible parties to ensure that we had a system that could be. Progressively enforceable and easily done by staff. If, if you remember, the responsible party used to be. Whoever made the spill happen, and now it's the property owner, so we have an easy, hey. You guys have a vested interest in keeping things clean, we have an easy contact point for getting things cleaned up. And we also set water quality parameters, so we don't have to. Go back and forth saying, is it really this, is it really that? It's easily testable with tools that we have here. That way we can say, hey, you can see clearly, it did change this parameter, pH turbidity. Fecal coliform levels, things like that. Source control training, we had to train all city staff that's responsible for source control training. It was a big training, I am the only staff member who conducts those inspections, so I made the, the training and. Signed off that I did it. Uh, I know, it was, it was a, it was a big load, but I was willing to do. Any questions on those?
Thank you Reese.
Any questions?
I just a quick one, uh, was you showing all those businesses and I noticed the Diamond Car Wash, which is an example of a business that probably is. Throwing a lot more stuff into the storm water systems and, and discharge of. All kinds of materials and metals and.
So um.
How do we, how do we, how do you mo- monitor them, how do you?
Yeah, so. Car washes actually have a system, their part, all the water that's collected goes into the actual sewer system. The reason it's high up on that uh pollution potential is because they have products on site. Things like soaps, things like detergents, um, and then automotive fluids. That. If they spill in transit, if an employee spills them, if some of the machinery breaks and it sprays it out. Then it could be conveyed, but their normal operation of business. Collects all that, it reuses it so that it reduces the amount um. Of new water that gets used, but really we go there, a regular source control inspection, you check. Inside the business, outside the business for any. Source of pollutants, so I s- check if you have, if you're an auto shop, where do you store your used oil? Um, where do you store? Your brake cleaner, flammable things, where do you store them, are they stored properly? If they spill, do you have the materials to clean it up, do you have a plan to clean it up if these things spill? And if they don't have any of those things. Our program also provides those, we provide a spill plan if they need one um. I provide suggestions on what BMPs can work and we look at if they need a BMP. What works best with your business's ability, so you know. If you've got a fifty-five gallon drum, but you don't have the disposable amount to pay for, you know. A really big secondary containment system. Get a kiddie pool for now. Put that as a savings item to get later on, but that'll still hold what you need it to hold, you know. Any other questions?
Council, Councilperson.
Just to comment, um. Can tell how passionate you are about all of it, we're lucky that we have you here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting us in compliance.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thanks.
Hey, city brings us to a report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first one is um. Uh, just unfortunately, uh regarding the CQC uh scholarship applicant that uh represented Mill Creek. That we chose, Madison's panel did not make the final cut, so just wanted to communicate that. Uh, the second is um, had a, I don't normally um communicate. A report on econo- uh quarterly meetings, but I had a good meeting with economic clients, Thomas County with our deputy. With our director of uh public, um, sorry, community development planning, um, just to get introduction there um. Ray Stephenson, who was the former mayor of Everett, now is uh the uh permanent CEO of Economic Alliance, Thomas County and. The relevance there is that uh trying to get them to work with us and they're willing to work with us as we start to. Uh move forward with uh South Town Center and uh also provide us with economic uh advisement going forward, so. Um, we're happy to have Ray and his team hopefully on board soon. Uh, councilmember Allison did mention uh in the prior council meeting about uh Nola Philbrook and her archives. Uh, Nola did send me an email and wanted to share the archives with the city and I just talked to her today and just thanked her for. Um, her commitment to the city in the past, she currently lives in Texas, I believe somewhere, so. Um, it's good speaking with her briefly. Uh, Mr. Scudder came to speak in public session today and uh. Uh, coincidentally, today we had a meeting with uh president of the vintage Ryan Patterson. Uh, this morning, it went well, and so I can all update Mayor, Mayor Protem. Uh, with the deputy city manager on Thursday. Uh, so into my reports, now hand it over to Director Todd's report on the completion of uh. Highway ninety-six, um, surface uh stormwater piping.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of weeks ago, council, I got to bring the old rusty pipe and the new piece of plastic pipe and everything was going good. I asked you for extra money for contingency. And we thought we were not gonna need it and that was jinxed us, but I think the good news, we probably aren't, still aren't gonna need to do it. What happened was there was an unlocated Zipley communication cable, and so we, they dug it up. Didn't know it was active or not when we dug it up, but it turns out Zipley later on came looking and said, geez, all of us, all of a sudden stuff doesn't work very more, so. The, the protocol for that is that the construction company goes to Zipley and says, you didn't mark this, it wasn't located, it's your fault. And so the right now they're checking to see that's happened, but it's on the order of tens of thousands of dollars, we most likely won't be on the hook for that, but until we're done. We're not done. Our contractor did a fantastic job, even with that extra delay of. Instead of nighttime work, they worked an extra day to have to set up so Zipley could make a patch, they had to splice it two places. Got that work done and the thing is working beautifully and they got all cleaned up, one of the best contractors we've dealt with in terms of how the project came out, so. We're all good and the water is flowing and everybody's happy, thanks.
Good evening, Council. Um, so I have a quarterly report from the police department uh this evening. Um, kind of going over it section by section, we've had a small increase in, or an increase in prisons crimes. Um, however, we've had a significant decrease in property crimes. Um, a point of interest for uh council as of late has been our, our traffic safety. You can see here that our traffic contacts have gone up significantly. As well as our infractions and citations, and you can see as a result collisions have decreased um significantly as well. Um, we did have a decrease in canine uh deployments and captures uh over the last quarter. This is a result of officer, or I'm sorry, Corporal Lurma and his canine partner Honda being in training. Uh, they've now been uh dual certified in both. Um, patrol work, so tracking and also now as a drug recognition um dog, so. That's, that's the reason for the decrease there. I'm really proud of the work that's been done by our property and evidence technician. Um, Leslie has done a great job in reducing um the inventory of the property room and the, you can see the significant destruction. Um, that's been done with evidence items that are, have been adjudicated or have been held for their retention schedule uh limits. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Chief, quick, so the infraction increase I get, we're, we're doing more to watch out for parking violations. What's driving the increase in the arrests? There's a.
So those traffic contacts also, when you have that many traffic contacts, you're more likely to come across suspended drivers. Um, individuals that have warrants during those traffic contacts, and that's gonna possibly increase your arrests as well. We've had an increase in it, in some person crimes and that includes assaults, which includes domestic violence is, issues as well. And so those, those arrests might be increased there as well.
Is there a way to break down, I assume the assault number can be broken down into domestic violence versus non-domestic violence?
It could be mined down that far if, if that was an, of area of interest.
Uh, other, Councilperson Allison?
Yeah, I just um, you know, I, I was. Happy to see that the collisions are down, it, it's um, you know, maybe people have continued to get back into their groove of. Driving after spending a couple of years. Not driving so much. Um, the items destroyed, is there like a backlog that, that they've caught up with now?
That is correct, so. There was a period of time there, we had a temporary property and evidence tech that was filling the position, basically, our police support officer was working in that capacity. And was not as comfortable with the destruction side of her, that position. Not knowing and not had been fully trained in that area of the property room. Now that we have a fully trained property and evidence tech who is aware of the destruction regulations and rules. Um, those items are now being taken care of and addressed with a proper disposition.
Awesome, and then um, one more question. Um, the traffic contacts sta- statistics that you have here. Citations weren't given in those contacts?
That is the number of total contact.
Okay, and then the citation.
As well as infractions and citations.
Gotcha, thank you.
And I, and I think that this is a real testament to the work that's being done by the traffic safety unit, Officer LaRose and Officer Ramsey have done a great job. Um, I hear a lot of great things while I'm out in the community about how they see the officers out there enforcing the traffic laws. And that they're noticing these issues. You know, and we have very few, very limited negative feedback, almost the feedback we have is mainly positive, so we're, we're really proud of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, chief. Before we get to Armina, can we have a motion to extend the regular meeting to nine thirty, please?
So move.
Second.
All's in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, um included in your packets tonight is the um. Is the um compliance report for the ARPA funds that we received. So according to the financial assistance agreement, um all recipients are supposed to do annual reporting or quarterly reporting. Um, to the US Treasury, and so this compliance report that we provided um. Uh, for you tonight includes the um activities or the expenses that we. Have um incurred from April one of twenty twenty-four through March thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. Of the five point eight million dollars that we received from ARPA, we funded ten projects. And we only have about under three, thirty-five hundred left to spend for twenty twenty-five, for the remaining of twenty twenty-five. Um, so um, uh, that's it, I think that's good news, that means uh we will not likely have any refunds to the federal government. Technically is my report, Mayor.
Thank you, any questions? Any other staff reports?
No other reports, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, a few items relatively quickly, had a South County Mayor's meeting with the Mayor of Mulholland, Briar and Muckel Teal. Interesting discussion, but nothing worthy of reporting back on. Is anyone else attending the SEC dinner with me on Thursday night, or am I gonna be the only one? Okay, two of us will be there. The, I sit, for my day job, I sit on the PSRC Growth Management Policy Board and we're going through at our meetings and certifying comp plans and. Staff hasn't mentioned that our comp plan was certified as compliance with the. Vision twenty fifty plan at the last meeting, so one of the main things they're looking for in that compliance is, what we talked about a lot during the process was. Making sure we had the capacity for the different income bands and, and we were, we passed with flying colors, so. You have three hours and thirty-six minutes to file your taxes, file for your extensions or file your F ones. We have a meeting, I didn't, is it just you and me, Martin, we have a meeting with Representative Del Beni's office in a couple of weeks, those just set up, they've been trying to. Set up a meeting and frankly, I'm not sure what it's for, but it's on the books for end of the month.
Yeah, it's probably to discuss the potential federal grants that are available. They just posted the accounts recently, I believe, I got the email, I think Director Todd and Director Ryan got it as well, so we'll probably include. Deputy City Manager as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the PSRC General Assembly is May twenty-second at the Convention Center in Seattle from ten to one, I think. So registration is open, so I assume Leo will coordinate. Getting those of us who will probably attend registered and will need to before then designate our voting member for that meeting. Two more things, um, I got an interesting inquiry today, the PSRC hands out Vision twenty fifty awards. Which are awards to celebrate the efforts that are enhancing the region's communities and natural environment while advancing equity and opportunity for all. And I was asked to participate on the selection committee with, that's being headed up by the mayor of uh Auburn. So we'll be doing that, and I think those will be announced at the General Assembly. And then finally, a quick update on the legislature, there's a lot happening, I'm sure you've been following, I'm not sure if you guys were gonna report on any of this. But the thing of main interest was the TOD bill passed just before four o'clock today. I haven't reviewed it in a while, it was quite a bit different than what we reviewed last year, provides much more flexibility to us. There were some floor amendments in a striker that I have not yet reviewed yet, but it did pass just before um four o'clock, I was watching the Senate floor vote. Why that happened, so. And we'll hear more in the next few days on what happens with the budget. And I think that is, that's what all, all I had. Mayor Protem, any report?
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Councilmember Cavalieri.
Just briefly, um, a week or so ago, I, I sat in for. Councilmember Duque for the Parks Board while she was on vacation, enjoying her time off. Um, I was happy to see a lot of the old faces and a lot, and meet some of the new faces, so it's um. As usual, it's a very vibrant group, that's very community involved. Um, one of their concerns. Was also um, one of my concerns as well, they were hopeful at some point that. They would get uh some sort of documented update of. Of the ARPA projects' status and, and expected completion dates, so I told them I'd put that out there. Uh, this evening and um, many of their parks projects, they'd like to see where they're at, so uh, that's all I have and uh. Happy Tax Day.
Councilman Stekler.
Yeah, not, not happy for everyone, uh, anyway, um, very quickly, um, do you want to remind everybody that uh. March, uh, May fourth, we have uh City Mill Creek's uh annual electronic recycling event, so make sure your. Word gets passed around and uh let everybody you know, know about it. We uh, it's a very successful event, I also wanted to mention that um I will not be in attendance next week. Uh, due to, um, I need to be out of, uh, I'll be traveling.
Okay, Councilperson Allison.
No report.
Councilmember Duque.
I really didn't think I'd have to say this because I thought it would already be um said, but um. Don't forget, the Extravaganza Spring Festival is this Saturday, I'm really excited to attend. Um, and to see all the changes that um, or all the fun activities that the vendors, businesses, and of course our staff. Um, have put together, um, and so as a reminder publicly, it's the Saturday, Heather Wood. Uh, middle school from ten to one PM, and a big thank you to all the sponsors and to the amazing work. I went past the Markham um offices today to go to a chamber meeting and there were huge inflatable bunnies. And I've never been more jealous in not, like in working somewhere, I want to work with those bunnies. And so I'm gonna need one, that's why I comment there. Speaking to that, that transition today was a chamber lunch and learn meeting, um, the speaker was Tom Sweeney from Hope Creek Charitable Foundation, as a reminder. They're the ones who operate Mill Creek Food Bank, really great discussion and conversation about, well, presentation about all the things that they're doing. Um, and of course, the incredible need there is in food banks in our area. Um, and a special shout out for Deputy City Manager Laurel Rock who came um as part of our um getting uh city staff to attend and. And again, reminder, in invitations for all of our council members that when you can. Um, this Thursday, I'm unable to attend the um. The, I just forgot what John and uh, uh, yes, uh, the event, because there's a mega mixer for the chamber with. Um, the Mill Creek Rotary, um, and so I will be in attendance for that and I'll have any updates for you there. And I wanted to say a big thank you to the two um, uh, residents who spoke at the beginning of our meeting. About uh the Penny Creek Nature Reserve, it's definitely an area that I, I walk in that I use and I'm part of that Facebook group. So I really appreciate all the, um, if you're not already in part of face, that Facebook group. The amount of residents who take the most amazing photos of the wildlife there is worth it alone, so. Please, I definitely take a look at that, and um I participated in. That, I'm gonna forget the name again, but it's the, the, the safety traffic, some, the today. Safety Action Plan, thank you, uh, Director Todd was also participating in it and, you know, had another uh great review about um the significant areas. And they're coming to us soon, so you'll hear all about it, but um, thank you very much.
And last but certainly not least, Councilmember.
No report.
Audience communication, I didn't like to address the councils, seeing no in the chambers and no online, so that brings us to our executive session. We'll be recessing to executive session to discuss the performance of a public employee per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one G. No action will be taken at the conclusion of the executive session, so we will be in recess until nine fifteen. No action will be taken at the conclusion of the executive session, so we will be in recess until nine fifteen.
Yes, that would be worse.
Lee, are you there?
Yes.
Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay, it is nine eleven. The council has concluded its executive session. As I indicated at the outset, no action is being taken at the conclusion of the executive session. We have nothing further on our agenda for the evening, so I will adjourn the meeting at nine eleven P M.